Good morning and welcome. Some of you welcome once again. Thank you for being here. This is a regular meeting of Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's August 24th, 2021, and all members of the Court are present. This meeting is called by order. Please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the honor and the privilege of conducting the people's business of Hardin County. Lord, we pray for wisdom in all that we do. Lord, we do lift up Dean Truitt's family, Lord God, at the loss of his life, Lord, the assistant fire chief and coons. Will we pray your grace and mercy on their family? And Father, we lift up our citizens today. Lord, we lift up the many, Lord God, who have lost their lives, Lord, in this battle with COVID. Lord, for the many lives that have been impacted, Lord, by those that are being sick and in the hospital, Lord. And Father, we pray for your grace and your mercy over our community, and also, Lord, on our leaders, Lord, as we make decisions, Lord, in the future and today, Lord. And Father, we do ask that you watch over our first responders. And Lord, we ask, Lord, that you protect those who protect us. And Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I play the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, sir. Item three, approved minutes of the August 10th, 2021 regular meeting and August 17th, 2021 special meeting as presented by the county clerk, Linda Austin.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from August 10th, 2021, and approval of cash statement as presented by the county treasurer, Deborah McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of $1,590,451.59. On the cash report and general checking account, we have $14,56,636.63 in tax pool, $321.09 for a total in cash funds of $14,56,957.72.
Move to approve, this presented.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McWilliams. Item five, authorization of the county bills as presented by Ms. Laura, County Auditor. Ms. Laura?
The pre-approved expenditures for August 11th through the 12th are $575,262.91. Pre-approved expenditures for August the 18th are $14,248.61. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are $217,481.66. A list of additional bills for our health and life insurance is $257,293.91 for a total expenditures and transfers of $1,000 and $64,287.91. Gross payroll for August the 12th is $573,997.12, and the transfer for that payroll is $706,404.41.
Need to pay the bill?
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, consider request by the county judge to employ a temporary clerk in the county judge's office at a rate of $14 per hour to fill in while the legal assistant is out of the office on Family Medical Leave for approximately eight weeks, beginning on September 13th, 2021. If approved, consider approving the following amendment to the fiscal year 21 budget. Would move $1,695 from 010401800 contingency to the salaries temporary line item, the FICA taxes, workers' comp insurance, and state unemployment tax as listed on the agenda. I have, our legal assistant has got to have a major surgery coming up on September 13th, and while she is out, I need to be able to hire a temporary clerk to work up to 40 hours a week if we can find somebody to do that who's interested, and that person will basically just answer the phones and greet the public and handle some other minor filing and things like that during the absence of Ms. Williams.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, and I just want to add that that will roll into next year's budget, so we'll need to conduct another budget amendment in October for the payroll that would happen starting after October 1st. Again, if we find somebody that will fill that position. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and I appreciate that very much. Item seven, discussion and possible action to set salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county and precinct officers. We have a public notice that was published in the Sillsby Bill on August 11th, 2021. This reads exactly as it did when we looked at it for the proposed budget, and all of the salaries, with the exception of the constables and myself, receive a 3% increase. Mine is just a little below 3% because of the way that the salaries for the county judge is broken up over different departments, and then the constables received a 5% increase. One other change from last year to this year is the supplement pay to the district attorney, which was not in prior years' budgets, at least not for the past six and a half years, and that amount is $13,000 to the new district attorney.
Move to approve, this presented.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young to approve the salaries, expenses, and other allowances for all elected county and precinct officers as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, discussion and possible action to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 22 budget. To ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022 budget. The 2021, 2022 Hardin County budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the 2020, 2021 budget by an amount of $1,62,178, which is a 5.251 increase from the previous year's budget. Property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is $491,971.
Judges, this, uh, time to find it. Here's it. Well, we set the new rate, correct?
No, sir. This is just to ratify. This is a new requirement by the legislature that was started last year. So, we did this last year for the first time. It's just a ratification of a property tax increase, and I really wasn't going to state much about it in this line item, but I will when we set the tax rate here in a few moments, and of course, open that up to comments by any member of the Court.
Move to approve, this presented.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, discussion and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 Hardin County budget. If you will recall, we've talked about this about an hour ago regarding the fiscal year 2022 budget. We have a proposed budget that was accepted by the Commissioners Court in late July, and I filed it with the county clerk on July 30th. There are some changes that were made from the proposed budget to the budget that's been presented to the Court today to adopt, and Ms. Candace McKinney in the auditor's office has put together this one page sheet here for us to talk about those changes, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Laura at this time to go ahead and read those into the record.
We created a new revenue in the general fund, 010349495, entitled accounting fees. That is the additional revenue we receive from the health grants to offset the salaries in the assistant auditors, and the amount is $12,000. It was not in the proposed budget, but we reflected in the budget we're about to adopt. We also increased, I mean, we also created a line item for the grand jury bailiff and the 356 district judges' budget in the general fund. We, in that amount is $3,000. We took it from the substitute court reporter slash bailiff line item, and that amount in the proposed budget was $10,000. In the adopted budget is $7,000. We did the same thing for the 88th district judge. We created a grand jury bailiff line item, put $3,000, transferred that money from the substitute court reporter slash bailiff line item. In the county auditor's budget, we increased the assistant auditor's salaries in the amount of $7,125. The FICA tax is $545. Health insurance, $3,200. Retirement, $1,090. Workers' comp, $14. State unemployment, $12. And supplemental debt, $14, for a total of $12,000.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Laura. As we talked about in the public hearing earlier, the fiscal year 2022 budget expenditures are a total of $24,975,825, and revenues are in the same amount, $24,975,825, for a balanced budget being proposed to the Commissioners Court, the county elected officials and department heads and employees, and the citizens of Hardin County for adoption today.
Move to approve.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. This vote requires a record vote, so at this time, I will ask each Commissioner or each member of the Court to vote by answering yes or no to the motion made by Commissioner Kirkendall and seconded by Commissioner Cooper, starting with Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Any other discussion regarding the fiscal year 2022 Hardin County budget? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Item number 10, considering possibly approved an order to adopt the tax rate of .55677 per $100 valuation. The debt service rate, I'm sorry, the debt service tax rate would be .008859 per 100, and the maintenance and operations tax rate, .547918 per $100 valuation. Again, we discussed this a little while ago in our public hearing. The total tax rate that we're looking to adopt today is .55677, and that is a slight increase over the voter approval rate, but is 2.3 cents lower than the current rate of 58 cents per $100 valuation that is currently in effect for the tax year 2020.
And that's a total of 4% below what it was last year.
Yes, sir. That's correct. I just want to make a comment that I know that a lot of citizens received notices from the appraisal district that their property values went up. So, even though we're lowering the tax rate, if their property values went up in excess, you know, they may not see this as a decrease. They're still getting an increase, but it's not quite as much of an increase had we left the tax rate at 58 cents or even gone up to the 60 cents that we could have adopted. But as we've discussed many times in our previous workshops and in our public hearing this morning, it wasn't necessary to go up to 60 cents or even necessarily to keep it at 58 cents, as long as we can continue to bring in the revenue that we think we're going to bring in on other revenue line items that are not property taxes, which are mostly JP Court fines and fees, the county court fines and fees, and district court fines and fees. Those are the majority of our other revenue line items, and there's others as well. But as long as those come in where they're supposed to, then we should be good with this tax rate. And I believe that we have done a diligent job in making sure that we keep the tax rate at a level that's fair and equitable to all the citizens of Hardin County.
I agree with that, Judge. Things have definitely changed since I first come on the Court, and I think it's very much government overreach whenever I'm required to read a motion, but I am required. So, I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.556777, which is effectively a 3.94% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
May I read the breakdown of fund of the different funds?
Yes, ma'am.
For the general fund, it's .447787. For the jury fund, for the jury fund, it's .016307. For the road and grid, it's .083824. And for interest and sinking, it's .008859 for a total of .556777.
And just to refresh my memory, the interest and sinking is also the same as the debt services?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Judge, I see where this rate will affect the maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $22.22.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct.
That's a decrease.
A decrease.
Yes, sir. All right, this also requires a record vote. I'm going to start with the other end. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
He loves when I do it. Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, as unanimous vote to adopt the tax rate of .55677, broken down as read off into the record by the auditor. Thanks to everyone very much, and I also want to thank all of the elected officials and department heads for working closely with us regarding setting of the budget and the tax rate this year. I know that we had a lot of changes that we had to endure. I believe that we have met all of the new statutes in doing so, and so thanks to everyone for all of your hard work to make sure that that happened. Item number 11, discussion and possible action to add Juneteenth as a county holiday. Commissioner Chris Kirkendall?
Yes, sir. Judge, I understood that we had some employees inquiring about this due to the current federal administration naming June 19th as a federal holiday, and at this time, where we are in this world, I would like to see it added, although I do believe we have too many county holidays, and so I will put that in the form of a motion to add that as a county holiday.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to add Juneteenth as a county holiday starting in 2022. Do we have a second? All right, any discussion regarding that?
I agree with Chris. We got county holidays. You know, if we're going to give up one for one, or, but right now, we just, we're off all the time. It's just hard to do.
And I agree with that. Yeah, we have, I just received a memo this morning from our assistant health director that says she can't take all of her time off, and she's going to lose, I believe it was nine days if she can't roll over, so I'll be submitting a memo to Ms. Mendesaba later asking to get those to carry over, and if that requires Commissioners Court approval, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. Her anniversary date's coming up, and she's going to lose some time because she can't take off. I think we have quite a few people in that position. All right, so on item number 11, the motion passed for lack of a second. Move on to item number 12. Consider approval of request to pay an overtime rate to deputy sheriffs for working security at the regional infusion center and authorize all other expenses associated with the infusion center utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funding. That's the, also known as ARPA.
Similar. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Just want to say, Sheriff, thank you for picking up a day of security there. As discussed, when we first talked about the infusion center, Lamont PD had agreed to pick up the security, but that was not approved by management. So, they are picking up one day, and Hardin County is also picking up a day that's being spread through all of the four counties that are part of the infusion center, and we can pay the overtime rate and get that reimbursed through the ARPA funding. This also allows the auditor to go ahead and set up that accounting correct until that can be paid out of that, those funds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, consider possibly authorize the county judge to sign notice of election and consolidate county election precincts for the November 2nd, 2021 constitutional amendment special election.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Mrs. Austin, do you have anything you want to say? All right. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 14, presentation by the grant administrator, MPTX associates to provide an update on current grant-funded projects administered by the Texas General Land Office and the Texas Division of Emergency Management. Mr. Roby, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, sir.
I know you sent us a PowerPoint. Let me find it and throw it up on the screen here.
Okay, I have a few slides to show everyone, talking about projects we have been working on actually for about three years, seeing it take shape. Want to give you the outline of this. It covers a number of different programs and a number of different agencies. But before I start, I want to compliment the county's team, department heads, officials, leadership for making these projects come to life. Started with grant applications. Now we're seeing the awards come in and the implementation of it. So, couldn't have been done without some excellent work from many folks, and so I want to definitely recognize that.
Well, I want to thank you and interrupt you for a minute, and thank you and your team for all the hard work y'all do. It's very professional, and everything, from what I see, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed because you know that two, three, or five years from now, either this group here or some other group is going to have to go through an audit, and you're making sure that when we go through that audit that everything is passed. So, thank you for doing that, and we appreciate all the hard work that you and your team do.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, ma'am. And so, with that, I want to explain how this table is put together. It's got a number of columns. We added some new columns with the input, Dr. Daniel, and want to start by explaining the agency on the far left. We got a few. Those are state agencies, Texas Division of Emergency Management, Texas Water Development Board, Texas General Land Office. The next column over is the program. That's the grant program type, and it's all in an acronym or an abbreviation. Those abbreviations are listed down at the bottom of the table if you're interested. The next column to the right is the state code. That's just an identifier that we use to distinguish which of these projects are which. Then we have a project title, kind of describes what it is. I'll be talking about each one today. We have a total budget, a percent of funds spent to date, and then finally, a current deadline for the project. So, with that, I'll start off with the first set of projects. These originate as FEMA funds, the TDM and Texas Water Development Board projects. The first one on our list here is a hurricane safe room project. I know the term "safe room" is something you associate with just something that's inside an existing building. This would actually be a full building of its own, built to withstand hurricanes and provide shelter and relief for first responders and emergency events such as tornadoes or hurricanes. We're working with the architect. He's made significant progress over the last number of months, and we're looking ahead for the next 30 days to be an important stage of a surge of activity coordinating with emergency management on the shaping and crafting of just how that building's going to look, and then ensuring that that structure meets FEMA requirements for the grant provisions. So, I'll be reporting much more over the next couple of months, because if you'll note, the deadline for the architect's products is November 23rd. There's a number of additional things that also need to occur in the meantime. County department heads are very aware of that, so you'll be hearing a lot about this important project. Moving down to the second project on our list here is a detention pond just on the west side of Lumberton, north side of Farm and Market Road 421. Note, this is a phase one project because it's just the engineering and feasibility study for this project. It's been interesting. Engineer's been doing a great job of investigating what different options need to be factored in in order to ensure that the project is solid and justified and produces the benefits that we originally anticipated. There's been a couple of changes, especially in just the last 30 days. One is that they're finding that they may need to expand the scope of the project to include some channel improvements, for example, in order to make the flood control structure really work as intended. There's some other, you know, budget changes that they're looking at. Again, solid progress from the engineers, and we'll be reporting more on that in future reports. Next item, acquisition project. This is one that's also funded through a TDM grant, about 20 properties. We've been working on that probably just a little bit longer than the other two that I just described. We're about 42% into the budget for that. The current deadline for this acquisition project is May 22nd of 2022. We're on schedule to meet that, and we've seen really good progress in the last 30 days.
And I don't mean to say they're not important, but all the rest of the next four projects are the same, and I can make these speak for themselves. I'd like to hear you and Commissioner Young talk about these Saratoga flood control and roads projects. I think that that would be a good topic to move to next, if that's okay with you, unless anybody has any questions about acquisitions.
I have one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Greg, you and I talked on the phone the other day. Which one of these categories does that fall under what you and I talked about?
The CDVGDR acquisition project.
That's the last one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate your input. We got that information in, and I intend to get it out to each of the other commissioners to do a similar model, but we're going to get to work on that. Appreciate the question. So, that's the acquisition projects. Good summary there. Moving on to the Saratoga flood control. Again, the engineers have ramped up their work. One of their, some of their initial findings of doing a detention pond in that particular vicinity was that it wasn't producing the amount of benefits in terms of flood control that they, you know, I guess we originally hoped. What we're finding is it takes much larger detention structures to really actually reduce the water surface elevation and keep homes from flooding than was originally anticipated. Therefore, we've investigated a couple of things in the Saratoga vicinity. One is taking a look at culvert improvements, and the second one is road improvements and road elevation. We can do a combination of improve the transportation network and at the same time, improve drainage as well. So, Commissioner Young is very aware of that, and we are planning to continue to work on that.
So, just for the record, the Saratoga detention pond, it was found to not be feasible, and we're moving on to look at other projects that meet the LMA requirements to spend those dollars on. Is that how you categorize that?
Yes, sir.
And refresh my memory, I think whenever they did the initial engineering on the detention pond, we were trying to improve flood control downstream to Sour Lake, Pinewood, Country Wood, and even into Bevel Oaks and what have you. And when they looked at that, the improvement was only going to be like an inch. It was going to help flooding by one inch or less. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, just, that's the reason it wasn't feasible. But if y'all would like to talk about what you're looking at now?
So, now we're working with the engineers to identify some roads to do some drainage projects along with road overlays and improving the road conditions. We'll be doing some cross culverts, side road culverts. I'm just getting the list together to send to the engineer so he can identify and then work on a budget.
Perfect. Thank y'all. Any questions regarding that? Yes, sir.
You, the next three projects are all very similar. They are high clearance, off-road fire trucks for Saratoga, Sillsby, and Coontz Fire Departments. These are being funded through an infrastructure grant through the Texas General Land Office. We've got a budget out there, a significant budget for those, and the purchasing is working on the procurement for that as we speak. We're hoping to get those bids in soon and get those trucks purchased. Moving down to the next item, Gore Store Road Improvements. That's about a four-mile section of the road. Also see some overlay, some elevation in spots, and Commissioner Kirkendall is quite aware of how that's going. An update that you might not have noticed, as early as this morning at 6:45 a.m., we got the 60% design from the engineers, Victoria. And so, with that, we'll be able to take the next step of the process for the grant, which is the environmental review. Should be, we're hoping there won't be any complications in that in the next 30 or 60 days. We'll have the green light from GLO to move forward to construction.
Excellent.
So... That's an update for Gore Store Road. Next two items are different but related. The first one is a radio tower to be constructed on the west side of Sillsby. We've been working with the engineers on that. They've had some design questions, and we're making progress on that, pleased to report. Next item after that is a radio, individual radio units that would go in our first responders' vehicles that will sync with an upgraded network. That's something that emergency management errands on top of. We have a pretty good budget for that, too, so we're hoping to get a lot done there. Last two items on our list here are a little bit conceptual, but we're excited about them , too, and I'm going to actually highlight one in particular with additional slides, but...
You want me to flip to the next slide?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if you would. We have an overview of all the projects I just discussed on this map. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if you would. Uh, we have, uh, an overview of all the projects I just discussed on this map. You could show the distribution, uh, where these, these trucks and these drainage projects and, uh, acquisition projects are occurring. So that's an overview countywide of every single project we've talked about thus far. To talk about, you know, uh, the eastbound storm drains in particular, we, this is an overview of, as you can see, uh, thank you, sir. Southeast, uh, Harden County, we've got, uh, some red lines that are, uh, about midpoint, uh, in the map. Those are running out of the Woodcrest, uh, addition. And the idea is to improve drainage out of there, uh, and in, and in so doing, it's gonna reduce water surface elevations for the greater part of Lumberton and reduce, uh, water surface elevations for areas south of there, all the way down into Cooks Lake Road, uh, Rosa Lakers, uh, and other parts. So, large project is what we're seeing. Uh, it involves, uh, pipes, six-foot diameter pipes, uh, being fed by smaller diameter pipes that would run underneath, underneath the streets of that subdivision, eventually funneling out into a, an open channel that will carry it all the way to the Natures. The current budget for that is, is still being, uh, being looked at, but we do have a grant program, I think identified, that is going to be a, a good, uh, a good fit for this. Next slide is gonna show, uh, a little bit closer up view of just what I was talking about. You can see all the way to the furthest to the east is a part where there's an existing, uh, canal we'll be dumping into. There's a very good chance that if we may need to include what are called flap gates or, or storm gates at the end of it that would, uh, prevent the, uh, the Natures from backflowing into this system. Uh, there's probably gonna need to be a pump station, uh, perhaps to, uh, install. And the rest of it is just a pipe network that would lay, uh, underground. So, uh, again, we're, uh, we're closely monitoring opportunities for, for grant funding for this. Uh, but it's an example of a large-scale project that could do, uh, tremendous, uh, benefits for, for flooding in the county. So this is, that's today's highlight for a special project.
Will, uh, any of that particular project, uh, go into Jefferson County or all of it's Harden?
The, the outflow is the Natures River itself. And so, uh, yes, the, uh, if, if there is any additional discharge into the Natures, that, uh, is gonna go downstream into the Natures system effect, uh, Orange and Jefferson County.
But it, but as far as if there's a possibility of land acquisition, it's all Harden.
It's all Harden County. It is.
Yes, sir. And, and that is all existing county right away because we're going underneath the roads. And so that's an additional benefit of this project is that you would have, uh, municipal, you know, level storm drains being laid underneath the road and need resurface, uh, on top.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All construction happens in Harden County?
Yes, sir. I, yeah.
And this is, uh, something that Alvin and the Flood, uh, Committee, the, uh, Drainage Committee came up with about two or three years ago, right?
Right.
Right. Okay. One last thing. We, we do have, uh, a project with, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall's attention, uh, Mill Creek Flood Control Improvements. Uh, so, uh, in discussion about that. Uh, but with that, uh, obviously there's a long list of things. I could talk all day. Uh, but I just wanna say thank you again for your leadership and, uh, any other questions?
Just, uh, just for the record, uh, hitting the north Mill Creek Road area and then all the way back into those neighborhoods and on out to the creek is where that would take place and that would be much needed, much welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, and, and, you know, like he was saying, this is gonna take water out of the east side of Lumberton, which now flows south. It goes all the way down to Pine Island Bow through Boggy Creek and through a ditch that was dug by text, uh, many years ago. That's already all overloaded. So it's gonna take quite a bit off of that, but it's also gonna help Pine Island Bow when the water's coming from Bevel Oaks, Pinewood, Country Wood, all that coming south is gonna give more, so it can go down there. Uh, we're crossing Village Creek Slough with pipe. So the water's not gonna be falling into Village Creek Slough, which also flows south and goes to Cooks Lake Road. So it's gonna take water off that area too. So it's gonna put everything into the Natures River. Most of that'll be put there before anything else gets there. And, and like you were saying, pump stations are gonna be on there, so it's, it's gonna be pumping water out. And, you know, that, and you can pump water out when there's water there already. So, it's, it's gonna be a really good deal. It's gonna help a lot of flooding problems in that part of the area down there.
That's good. Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate you.
Pleasure, Greg.
Item fifteen, considering possibly authorize the county judge to sign on behalf of Harden County, a deed to replace a lost deed, a deed to replace lost deed and an immediate deed and grant of access to one point six-four acres of land out of Lot Three, Lot G of the Paraffin Oil Company in Colorado Batson Syndicate Subdivision in the Willis Donahoe League, abstract number sixteen.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, considering possibly, I'm sorry, consider approval of request to apply for an additional grant through the FDA, AFDO Retail Standards Program for ten thousand dollars. The grant funds will be used to purchase inspection equipment for the Harden County Health Department and there's no master required. Request made by Regina Bolton, the Health Inspector.
Some move. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And y'all might not have heard her, but, uh, Mrs. Bolton said thank y'all very much. Number seventeen, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to execute an air local agreement with the city of Beaumont, authorizing Harden County to regulate subdivision flats and approve related permits inside Beaumont's extra territorial jurisdiction, also called the ETJ. ETJ located within the county of Harden pursuant to section two four two point zero zero one Texas Government Code. This is actually something that the county should have taken action on back around two thousand one or two thousand two. We, uh, just caught this recently through the, uh, project that's, uh, received a lot of press over in Lumberton off of four twenty-one. Uh, that is in the Beaumont ETJ. So in a meeting that Mr. Minnick and I had with Beaumont, uh, it was agreed upon that we would, uh, enter into this agreement. And, uh, we believe that the Beaumont City Council will be agreeing to, uh, sign the same agreement at their next meeting next week.
Some move.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eighteen, and I just wanna add, well, we'll probably enter into a similar agreement with the city of Lumberton. But we needed to get this one taken care of first. So we'll be seeing that come up on a future agenda as well. Consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign two thousand twenty-two County Choice Silver Retiree Medical Program renewal offered by Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Pool. Uh, maybe this is just a renewal. Is that right? Are there any changes to the terms?
No, of what we have existing.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Another second. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, discussion and possible action regarding the refund exceeding the five hundred dollar limit for account number one, two, six, three, four, nine for the tax year two thousand twenty, requested by Ms. Cook.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? Is there something you wanna say?
No, sir, just, um.
I wanna make sure.
Okay, no, that's, you have your papers.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign lease agreement between Harden County and Jennifer Beal for property located at four two four four seven Highway one oh five in Batson. This is the, uh, property that we lease out to the, uh, I think they're a tax preparer, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Ms. Rulon had it for a number of years, probably two or three years, and then she passed away. And the person taking over that business was the only bidder. And that was awarded, I believe, in the last court and this is the agreement, uh, that needs to be signed now to, to keep that going.
Some move. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twenty-one, considering possibly authorize the county judge to sign an agreement with MPTX Associates Incorporated relating to the fiscal year eighteen flood mitigation assistance program, grant administration.
Some move.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. And as a reminder, this was a, uh, an agreement we had in place with another vendor who chose that, uh, they no longer wanted to, uh, handle that project and we awarded it to the second, uh, person who scored out of that, uh, proposal process, MPTX Associates, and this is the agreement to move forward with that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Greg, I wanna thank you for taking that on because there's some stuff there he's gonna have to clean up that the other company didn't, uh, quite, uh, well, he, he's gotta clean up some stuff there. So appreciate you taking, taking that on. We, we thank you for working with us on it. Number twenty-two, discussion and possible action recommendation from evaluation committee concerning proposals received. Uh, I should say four grant administration services related to the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. This will be presented by Misty Sims, the purchasing agent, who's here virtually. Good morning, Ms. Sims.
Good morning. Are y'all here?
Yes, ma'am.
Proposals were opened on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at two PM in the purchasing department office. Myself and Stacy Eckert were present. We received, um, I believe eight Tetra Tech, TLC Engineering, MPTX Associates, Trailer and Associates, Langford Community Management Services, Griffith Mosley Johnson, AG Witt, and Grant Works. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Young, she was the chair, Erin Tupper, Amanda Holland, Sheriff Davis, and Ms. Jill Brewer. Uh, Trailer and Associates scored the highest with the second of Grant Works.
Ms. Sims, are you recommending awarding the number one and the number two for this or just awarding to one, uh, grant administrator?
Just, just one, I believe.
Okay.
Unless the court prefers to do two.
I'm gonna go off your recommendation. I think that sounds okay to me.
Move a grant to Trucking and Associates. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to grant this, uh, grant administration to Trailer and Associates. Any discussion? I wanna thank everybody who served on that committee. I know that took some work to go through all those proposals and store them and it takes a lot of time and I appreciate your time there. And thank you, Misty, for handling that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-three, present, present results of bids received for emergency disaster debris monitoring services and possibly award to successful bidder or bidders. Ms. Sims?
Uh, bids were opened on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at two PM in the purchasing department front office. Myself and Erica Singletary were present. We received, I believe, six TLC Engineering, Witt O'Briens, Volkert, Debris Tech, Tetra Tech, and Thompson Consulting Services. Um, bid tabulation was calculated by the project manager, field supervisor, and debris monitor. We based those on a seventy-hour week. And then the environmental specialist is only based on hourly rate since we don't really know how many hours their services would be needed. Um, the lowest bidder is Tetra Tech. Uh, on this one, we had talked about possibly awarding a number one and number two, and so number two would be Thompson Consulting Services.
And who served on that committee?
It really wasn't a committee, but it was, um, myself, Erin Tupper, and Amanda Holland. And Amanda was awesome with her Excel skills. I'd like to say a thank you to her.
I'm gonna go by the recommendation of, uh, Ms. Sims on this.
Second.
So are y'all awarding a one and two or just a one?
One and two, yes.
One will be Tetra Tech and two will be Thompson Consulting?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion's made by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, I just wanna bring the court's attention. Tetra Tech is well below the average of, uh, the other companies. Uh, I told the committee that I'll be bringing this out whenever, uh, we voted. I am concerned that they are too low. And I just hope in the midst of a crisis, they can perform to standards. Uh, based in the past with conversations I've had with other commissioners at our conferences, uh, Tetra Tech had a sketchy reputation. Uh, Aaron called Orange County, I think, and got a good report on what they've done on Orange County.
Yes, sir. I called Orange County and Jefferson County. Uh, they, they served both and have during storms such as Laura. And they both gave a good recommendation.
Good deal. And thank you, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
So I wanted to call that to the court's attention and also Thompson had us during, uh, Ike and Rita. And I think the county had to deobligate several hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred eighty-six thousand?
Two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, because of Thompson. And so, uh, hopefully they've got their act together, but as we vote, that we just understand that we are, uh, that Tetra Tech is well below the average of good reputable companies. And that Thompson has served us before, but has cost, uh, taxpayers to have to deobligate two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or discussion regarding the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion, uh, motion, motion passes four to one. Item twenty-four, present results of bids received for emergency disaster debris site and possibly award to successful bidder or bidders. Ms. Sims?
Proposals were, I'm sorry, they're actually bids. They were opened on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at two PM in the purchasing department office. Myself and Stacy Eckert were present. First one we received Mario Gonzalez and that's located on FM eleven twenty-two, twenty-five cents a cubic yard. Bro Estates located on FM four twenty-one, twenty-four cents a cubic yard. And Gary Whitman Materials located in Sour Lake, fifty cents a cubic yard.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. And just as a reminder for your court and the public, these are services that we have to have in place, uh, ahead of a disaster. Uh, pre-disaster services that the state says that we have to, uh, have ready to go with a moment's notice in case we face a disaster. Uh, in the past, we, we have only probably received two bids for this and we have awarded both. That way we have two areas of the county where we can, uh, dispose of debris if we need to. Looks like this time we have, uh, another, uh, bid from the Sour Lake area and I'm not sure if that place is located, uh, anywhere near the FM four twenty-one area, but uh, just, it might be good to go ahead and award all three or maybe it's not, but, uh, it does give us, gives us another option in case we have a large disaster in the Sour Lake area to, uh, not have to drive so far down to four twenty-one to dunk those, uh, that debris material. Although it is a, a higher rate, but if, if FEMA would cover that, uh, then that would be all that matters to me. What is the pleasure of the court? Or is there a recommendation from Ms. Sims?
No, sir. I don't really have a recommendation. I wanted to see what you have thought about it.
I don't know if that would cause a, a conflict, uh, with the other two if we're paying a third higher. And I don't have a problem with it at all, but, uh, it would definitely be, uh, to our advantage to have, uh, one in Sillsby, one on four twenty-one for sure. And they're so close in, in prices that I don't think it'd make a difference. It's just depending on where you're located or where they're hauling it from, so.
Well, in the past, it has been, those first two have been our awards. In fact, before that, it was just the number two, Bro Estates. Is all we had for a while. And then I think for the past few years, we've had the Bro Estates and the Mario Gonzalez property.
Could we, uh, maybe approve a one and two and then, uh, also approve the court to enter into negotiations with Mr. Whitman if one and two are not sufficient?
Misty, is that something we can do?
On emergency basis?
Yes, sir. I can do that.
Aaron, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yes, sir. On, on this one, uh, instead of doing a one and two, I'd like to award both of them. And obviously we won't enter into that contract if the disaster's in the Sillsby area. We'll only go with the Gonzalez estate. Otherwise, uh, if it's in Sour Lake, we'd go with four twenty-one. With the one that's, uh, the other one price, that I just.
We can probably find something in that area for less money if we have to in, in that event.
Yeah, that and, or enter into negotiations with them and, and if, if the procurement policy will allow that.
In a discussion that I had with Mike Wyke of the, of Jefferson County, he told us they always award these during this time of year or maybe earlier. And, uh, when they have a disaster, they almost never use them because it's not where they need to be and they find something that's closer. So they, they end up saving money on the travel or the transport of the materials. Uh, they may have to pay a little more for the property, but uh, they end up saving money on the transport if they can find something closer. So, I, I'm sure we will be able to do the same. So you're asking to award the Gonzalez and the Bro?
Yes.
Bids or, uh, are these bids are proposed? Proposed. You're asking to award the Gonzalez and the Bro proposals and Ms. Sims, do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Same way, same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-five, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. Does any member of the court have anything they want to announce or discuss? Any public official present in the audience? All right, I just want to, uh, remind everyone, I sent it out, uh, yesterday afternoon, but just a reminder that we do have the new regional infusion center open that increased our ability in the region to, uh, administer infusions to persons who are sick with COVID. Um, one thing I wanna bring up that I heard last night, there's some people that say, well, I'm not sick enough to, I don't think I need that. Well, actually, this is, that's when you need to go, this is to start your treatment early so that you don't get sick and just have to go to the hospital, that's the reason that this is there, so... You would, uh, go through your primary doctor, your family doctor, and he or she should now have information. I think Baptist was gonna send that out to all of the, uh, local providers yesterday. They should know the process to get somebody in for an infusion and get them scheduled if they need to. If you don't have a family doctor, then we do have a call center set up, the number is four oh nine five five oh two five three six. It's the same number we use for vaccines, we're also using that now for, uh, infusions. You would dial option one, it may take a little while to get ahold of somebody, but you will eventually get through to someone who will screen your call and if you're eligible, then you'll move on to the next step, uh, which is where you talk to a, uh, a doctor, I believe, to schedule the appointment for you. So hopefully this is going to help us, uh, those who know way more than I do about how this works, they did, it'll probably take about thirty days before we start seeing this really, uh, uh, provide any, uh, help to the hospitals. So for the next several weeks, we're gonna see our hospitals and our EMS stressed just like they have been for the past several weeks. And all first responders for that matter, really.
Move to adjourn, sir.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank y'all.